I'm ABC. First item on the agenda is the district recognition of First Street Governor.
Ms. Winell Brown, if you would, please come and let's recognize your Teacher of the Year as well as your retiree.
Good evening to all of our board members and Dr. Williams. Our Teacher of the Year this year is Ms. Ashley Hamby. Ms. Hamby, if you would come up, please. Ms. Hamby is that teacher that always go for extra mile. When I came to Bath Street, Ms. Hamby was teaching floor grade. And I said, "Well, I need a resource teacher." So I looked to see who had resource as one, uh, SPED as one of their certificates, and she did, and other people. And I said, "I need a resource teacher." She came forth and she said, "Ms. Brown, I'll teach that next year." Thank you, Ashley. And she's been doing that job ever since. Now, she's not just that normal SPED teacher. She knows all the student data. She knows where those students are at any given second. You can ask her about any of them. She'll tell you their math, their reading, everything you need to know about where they are. If you need something done, that's your girl. You need data, that's your girl. She does our penis for patients. She was in charge of our sunshine and she was like, "Ms. Brown, I'm gonna give that up." That's okay, Ashley, you know you got other things to do. And she's also worked on her certification to get her leadership. She's certified in sign language. She's just that all-around teacher. You're having an activity out of school, who's there? Ashley Hamby. She's my go-to person. Always with a smile if I see her sad. "Ashley, what's wrong? Are you okay?" And seriously, I go to her like that and I know I scare her sometimes, but I don't ever want her sad because she is that teacher. She'll go the extra mile. She give her all, all day long. Our Bath Street Teacher of the Year is also her. And we also have Ms. Lavinia Richardson, who was our lunchroom manager to retire. I've known Ms. Lavinia most of her life and I knew that she loved to cook. And she's also the one, if you need something done in the kitchen or something extra for the school, all we have to do is just say, "Ms. Lavinia, I need..." We do miss her dearly at Bath Street, but we know she's enjoying her retirement. And she did say she was gonna try to make it, but she didn't. Maybe the cold weather got her tied in tonight, but Ms. Lavinia Richardson, our lunchroom manager, I'm not sure how many years she's been at Bath Street, but I know she's been there a long time. And we do miss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I look forward to hearing about what's going on in Bath Street in just a few moments. The last recognition we have this evening is the Georgia School Board Association 2020 Leading Edge Award. Thursday and Friday was our annual winter conference. Usually it's in Atlanta and the board and I go down. We're able to do a lot of different recognitions and different things and just network and meet with some people that we only see once or twice a year. We applied back a couple of months ago. Ms. Bell, Mr. Green, Ms. Sanders and I put out a paperwork to receive one of the Leading Edge Awards for the Hub. And so, we will recognize Friday in the virtual conference, our board in particular, for supporting what we're doing as a district with the Hub. So I'd like to present the 2020 GSBA Leading Edge Award to Mr. Andy Stewart, our Chairman and the Gainesville City Board of Education. The board, y'all step up front. Ms. Jones, if you will, we'll get a picture of us.
Not that we're really balanced.
Close enough. And we, just recently, the wraparound guide was published by Lee Coleman and Linda Beggs that worked with us in developing the Hub. And I just wanna, as soon as you flip it, pretty early on, there's an acknowledgements page. And we're mentioned in the fourth paragraph. It says, "The leaders from Gainesville City School System deserve their own noted recognition as well." They opened their wraparounds into the Hub in January 2020. Sarah Bell championing the concept of wraparound support before we met her in the summer of 2017. She paved the way by connecting us with Superintendent Jeremy Williams and his cabinet, who embraced the idea with unwavering support. Gainesville High School Principal Jamie Green has proven himself to be a passionate student advocate, who's never too busy to listen. Finally, a huge thank you to Tanya Sanders, Director of the Hub, who's taken wraparound to the next level and created the space for Gainesville students to find their place in the world. They've assembled a dream team and we are grateful to have been by their side through their journey. So Ms. Bell, Mr. Green and Ms. Sanders, on behalf of myself and the board, thank y'all. Board members, thank y'all.
All right, next item on the agenda is the board commendations. Mr. Smith, he's a competitor, will be getting a tribute to the resident congressman, Richard Davis.
Well, unfortunately, I did not know Dr. Thomas Richard Davis, but he sounds like he was a fascinating man and lived quite a full life. He passed away last Monday in 97. He was originally from Perry, Georgia, grew up on a dairy farm. He worked for the FBI as a fingerprint analyst and was actually deferred from World War II, from serving on World War II for 15 months because that was a job that was such in need. Then he joined the Marines and fought in the Pacific Theater. He went back to work, working with the FBI. Then he decided he wanted to become a minister. He earned his Master of Divinity from Mercer and eventually earned his Doctorate of Ministry from the Karmic Theological Seminary in Chicago. He pastored for over 50 years and he came to Gainesville as an associate pastor in 1980 at First Baptist Church. There, he launched the Ministry of Caring, which is a ministry that provides money for food insecurities and utility bills, things like that, of people that are not members of the church, but residents of Hall County. I believe that ministry now gets out about $100,000 a year. He was also on the committee that launched the Guest House, which is a place for typically adults with Alzheimer's and they can go there during the day and someone's there to watch them to give their caregiver a little bit of a break. After he retired from ministry in 1991, he became a substitute teacher and taught for 15 years at Gainesville High School. His daughter, Kathy, Kathy. She also taught at Gainesville for over 20 years for social studies. He was beloved at Gainesville High School. The students referred to him as Mr. T. And the 2003 yearbook was dedicated to him. In 2013, he was honored with an honorary Gainesville High School diploma.
Thank you, Dr. Randy. Are there any more board commendations? Dr. Williams, we have any citizens comments?
No, sir.
Is there anybody here from leadership, Hall County? All right. Start the official part of our board. Like to entertain the motion to adopt the agenda of the board. Motion by Mr. Smith. Got a second.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Nettle, all in favor? All right, I would like to invite the defendant, Winell Brown, up to give us the unbedding on First Street School.
So what was today's theme?
Today's theme was "Light Up My World." And Mr. Smith mentioned that my lights were going out, so I told him that being it was time to go home. So he said, "Woo, a short meeting tonight, right?" I said, "Yes, sir, there's no questions."
I think this trauma can go just about anywhere right now.
Exactly. We've had our 12 days before Christmas and so every day we have a different theme and just having a lot of fun and trying to make everything better right now since we have so much other things going on that distract us. But at Bath Street, everything is going well, board members and Dr. Williams. Appreciate Dr. Williams weighing his baron time for us tonight to represent Bath Street. Our enrollment as mainstay, as been said before, we appreciate the wonderful start that we were able to have at Bath Street with having those extra days. Our teachers appreciated. Our parents appreciated the time to come in and meet with teachers. Our focus this year has been on our literacy and our math with the new math program, our reading. And with our literacy, we're making sure that everybody is ready to teach what we've been asked to do for Bath Street, which is to show some gains there. So we did training with all of our new teachers and staff, intensive training with our book learns. We can't wait to see those scores because we know there's gonna be some growth this year. And also, we've been working and looking at our teaching with our ESOL. I was able to hire some paracels to come in and assist at each grade level. So we've been looking at our co-teaching model and doing some training with that and helping to ensure that our teachers are teaching the Tier One, giving all of our students the best. And with our extra paracels, they're pulling small groups, going in, working with skills that's been lacking. And we know with the COVID that we have students in and out, but with the staff there at Bath Street, we've been able to maintain and keep up with what everybody needs to make sure that we win our homes for this year. Any questions about that?
What is the enrollment?
482.
What is your secret about having no teachers retire?
I think just us maintaining that we're gonna do what we do. We just stay there so that they don't have to stay anything. I have to be determined. Just getting new teachers in and freshness, I think that's making people want to stay because they see a new group come in, "Woo, we can learn from them, they can learn from us," and getting the right fit. And I was thinking, "We'll have to hire some great new teachers this year and they just love it there."
Ms. Brown, is overall the health of the staff and the children good? What you expecting better than you expected?
Uh, it's been better. Every week, we might have one person out. I like, I have one teacher just waiting on a test, but some students are out. But parents are picking up work assignments for those students and making sure they're working at home. They're getting ready to zoom in with the classroom. The teachers are working from home when they are not there. Just kind of manage the classroom and then they continue to teach.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda, I'd like to entertain it in the group of admitted. Motion to approve the enrollment, seven and eight. Got a motion by Mr. Smith on items number seven and eight. I'm second. Got a second by Dr. Randy, all in favor? Motion to hear it. Dr. Williams, to hear it, if you'd like.
What appears to be my monthly reminder. If you have driven by the Gainesville High School campus anytime recently, you'll see something else going up. And during that time, you'll see the study center progressing extremely well. Tomorrow afternoon, this lab will report for the Cafeteria Video Center. Over the winter break, we will see steel start to go up from Cafeteria Video Center. As a part of all of those changes that are going on, we did meet as a GHS Campus Legacy Committee about four different times. We since have broken off to two different groups. One being the Marketing Committee that's actually meeting tomorrow and other one being the Heritage Committee, which looks at kind of a legacy and artifact piece of Gainesville City Schools. So that's Gainesville High School and the Bath Street Butler High School as well. One thing that we are looking and will be identifying tomorrow with the marketing team is looking at the plans to determine where can we, where can we place some of these artifacts and items. We have a number of those already stored away that are in our possession, but also we realize that in our community, there are some items that we may not be aware of. For example, we know that it's been submitted when we did a kind of a beta test with this document collection form. We found a first-ever soccer ball that was played in 1972, I believe it was. It's in someone's possession here in Gainesville. And so that's a great donation item. If you remember about two years ago, I believe it was, we donated an annual, what they used to be called, but yearbook now, from 1914. So there are some, there are some historical heritage items. Big, small, megaphones, uniforms, things like that, we've seen submitted as well, that we just kind of want to create a repository to know what is out there that meets kind of the mission. And so if you look at the link itself, Ms. Jones has worked out, we'll have this posted a couple of times a week. We will also get this out on social media as well via some of the alumni associations that are out there. That there is that unique item or something that just kind of fits into the history of Gainesville City Schools being Gainesville High School and Bath Street Butler High School, that it has to be mission-appropriate, good condition, non-hospice-eligible. If they can't complete the form, then they can print it out or call the board office. We'd be glad to work, walk them through this. But as you go through, we're asking for primary and secondary contacts. If someone we can get in touch with to know where it is, what is the nature? And if you can scroll down a little bit, where is it located? Is it a donation loan or deed or which timeframe? Is it, you know, prior to the 40s and 20s or is it in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, 2000s, 2010s? We have a number of categories. If you hit that dropdown box, is it related to academics, arts, athletics, student life, memorabilia, or just some mascots or other? And so we're asking them to upload a picture, describe the item, what are the dimensions, so that we get an idea of what's out there. This same process will be completed for the items that are already in our possession. And as the marketing subcommittee begins to work on a plan, we can then know what items do we have, how can they be rotated out, what's gonna be permanently placed? So that we can ensure that we're bringing that past into the present, but also what is present now, we have room for in the future as well. So Mr. North Hills is one of the co-chairs along with Kim Davis of that subcommittee and just really proud of the work that we've gotten started at this point. But now, it's really up to the community to help us find some of those pieces that can help show the picture of Gainesville City Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any questions?
And one thing I'd like to mention in conjunction with this is the idea of having this memorabilia collected really started a few years ago when we had the 125th anniversary celebration of the high school, which was really a lot of fun for those that were there. We really filled up the whole school, gyms and cafeteria and the hallways with memorabilia that people brought in. And so, one of the things on this form, as Dr. Williams mentioned, was that if somebody wants to donate an item, obviously, we might be able to display that, if they just wanted to loan it to us, that would be great. But even for people who may have items that they don't wanna part ways with, they can still let us know that those things exist, just in case there ever was an opportunity that we could showcase it temporarily or things like that. So I think we're gonna be asking everybody just to help us publicize this. Obviously, the school system's gonna publicize it, but if you could share with people who may have items that they can make this aware of.
Any other questions for Ms. Northols or myself?
Dr. Williams, your superintendent's report.
Yeah, this time it is not a printout. I just wanna share kind of an update of where we are since we met just a few weeks ago. You know, the number one thing that I do wanna share is this time of the year, there's a lot of excitement, of course, about just kind of a little bit of a break, but also, we're starting to see some of our seniors receive notes about early acceptance to colleges and universities. It was reported by Mr. Green, I think, earlier today, that we have eight early acceptances to Georgia Tech and 17 to UGA. Just probably a record, I believe, as far as the number of both of those. So when you look at 25 of our seniors out of 450 or so that early acceptance all rated as Georgia Tech and Georgia, that doesn't include other places, just, it just shows the quality of the senior class we have, the dedication, and just really looking forward to these next six months of how this class comes together, the accolades that go along with them. So just really proud of that. The other one, of course, when we had Thanksgiving last week, if you looked at the COVID report, you noticed that our numbers were slightly higher. Actually, they were quite a bit higher than any previous high week. Some of that, of course, is due to what we're seeing in the state and nationally, but also, some of the reporting we received last week was kind of a holdover from Thanksgiving. We were fortunate that when we opened school on September the 8th, we've been fairly steady. The impact we are seeing may have some cases tied back to school, but also, we know that there's a lot of things still going on out in the community and homes and so forth. So we're continuing to monitor every one of those situations. Sometimes you're having siblings that both test positive, so that number may show up as two, but we just know that, we don't wanna get caught up in all the numbers and overreact. So we are monitoring it daily. Right now, all eight, all eight of our schools are open. The largest threat that we have related to COVID and some type of closure is the inability to find coverage for the kitchens, for the bus drivers, and for the classrooms. You heard Ms. Brown talk about if a teacher's having to go out due to COVID from quarantine, especially in cases with isolation of being positive, but when they're having quarantine to go out, we're still allowing them to teach from home. And that means, though, we gotta provide coverage back in that classroom from a classroom management standpoint to make it work. That puts a huge burden on our employees. And so, just really proud of the effort they've put in. We've had, I believe, two or three weeks now where we've actually had more student cases than employee cases. So you can imagine, if we have more employee cases than student cases, that does create a burden. Just really proud of our administrators stepping up, stepping in, our subs coming in, and people just being flexible, responding to however they're asked. Another thing this time of the year that happens, and you heard a little bit about it last week, we did have some of our families displaced due to the fire over Versailles off of Park Hill. This time of the year, there's a lot of outpouring of support from our students and our employees and our families. Just really wanna commend every one of our schools for responding to that need, whether it's a list that the councils give, or the churches give to the schools, or community agencies give to the schools, people individually taking things on, just knowing of the need and meeting it. We're blessed to live in Gainesville City Schools. We're blessed to have a community that can respond to the needs. And I'm just really proud of all of our administrators, our employees, and students for seeing and needing, meeting the need, especially this time of the year. So just hats off to our team. So that is my report.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Williams, I would like to see us capitalize on that eight and 17 number, if we can get that furthered out on both our district websites as well as the high school websites and all of our followers, the various platforms, social media, spread the word about the good things that are going on.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Motion to adjourn to executive session. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Smith to adjourn the executive session. Do I have it here a second? Got a second by Mr. Nitzel, all those in favor?